We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's nice to see a room full of people who are also kind of tired from the weekend, but at any rate, we'll move on. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling, here. Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee Hines.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Here.
Trustee Bond.
And we're all here.
Here.
We'll move on to public participation. This is the public comment period. The first item, any member of the public that wishes to address the board on any topic may do so at this time. If you are on the agenda at a later point, you don't have to come up now.
I have a quick comment.
Sure.
On where my Green Bay Packers, there were 70,000 people watching them Saturday practice, and I'm ready for all you Bears fans for September.
Awesome. So we move the Green Bay comments to the beginning of the meeting now.
Yeah, well, I just thought it was public comments. I just thought...
I've just got one comment to add to that. As long as you talk about 70,000 people, there were actually 105,000 people watching my national championship Ohio State Buckeyes, so...
Can we move on?
Just, I'm Ohio State alumni. I need to dig him whenever I can.
All right, assuming that there's no other public comment, we'll go ahead and move on.
Good call.
The next item we have is recognition of the Montgomery Fest volunteers, which a lot of you are here for that this evening. So with that, Denny, you want to give an intro to what we're doing here?
Yeah, we've, every year we've had a lot of volunteers. It seems like we get more volunteers every year. We deal with about 250 different items, like from the parade and the craft booths, and this year probably 10% are getting more demanding and have more, have no accountability, but our society's heading that way, so we're used to that, I think. But next year, we're going to have to address some of the issues, but in general, it was a great fest. All the friends got together. I think it was a huge success. I want to thank all our volunteers tonight, our Public Works, our Police Department, and all the volunteers for their time and patience they put in during the fest, and especially thanks to Theresa and Doug for taking over a lot of my responsibilities, and I'm sure it was an eye-opening experience for both of you. That's about all I have to say, so we'll get on with handing out the awards.
Here's what we typically do. I'll read off the names. If you can come down and join us in the front, we'll take a picture when we're done, and then Denny and I'm sure other board members will chime in with commentary as we go. So with that, I will start with the parade volunteers. If you guys want to come down, we can come down to the front. Mike Hammond.
Mike's been our president of our parade for around nine, 10 years at least.
Thanks, Mike.
Joe's helped every year. His daughter usually has helped, but she couldn't make it this year.
Oh, she is? Look at that. Quinella. This one's for you.
His older daughter's helped. This time, his younger one did.
So their daughter helped in Rotary.
And then we, do we have Caleb? How do you pronounce Caleb's last name?
William.
William?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll give this to them.
Thank you.
And then we have Sidney Glassman.
She's not here either.
Not here?
Oh, okay.
Then we have Kyle Hammond.
Mike's two kids started out when they were real little, and now they're tall as Mike. Bigger.
Then we have Ryan Betts. All right. Let's see, what are we going to do next? HPC, so this is the car show volunteers?
I start, yeah, a lot of them, some of them were in the cottage, and the rest of them were at the car show.
Jeanie Lee.
Mike's been president of the historic, and she's over at the car show.
Kelly Lee?
She's not here.
Barbara Peck?
I don't think either one of the Pecks are here, and I don't think Gene Michaels and his wife are here, and they're the ones that sit in the cottage. We had, I think, 60-some people go through the cottage Saturday, and I think it was 130 or 40 went through on Sunday. So we had about 200 people go through that cottage during the weekend, and they were very interested in the history of Montgomery. These people that are older, and they just didn't come out tonight for it, but we appreciate their service and...
Do we have Pat Torrance?
I think Pat's, she's another Peck girl. We call them all Peck girls up there.
Jim Peck? John Amon?
John's working. He dressed up for the walk downtown here this weekend. You seen him, he had the big beaver hat, he had the coat, that was, he looked like something more, yeah, he looked Daniel Gray, something out of the 1800s running around. He led the tour.
And then the other two we have are Gene and Joe and Mike.
Right.
So then we also have, I don't know what stack this belongs to, but this is Dan Ditman?
Yeah, it's our car show judge. He did not make it. Where is he? Yeah, there's Dan. There's Dan, okay. No. Dan's been our car show judge for the last couple of years, and he's done a great job. He even grew on the beard. We thought he looked the historic, since the money was going for the historic for the car show. He looks great. There's two of those somehow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ed Pers, does that mean he's...
Yeah.
Russ? Then we have Mallory Kent. Lisa Cames. And then Pete Wallers.
Pete's helped us for years in the paperwork.
And then we have Colton Lee.
My grandson helped with the crafts. He's wearing his Canadian Cut the Net shirt that he took from the guys down at the lake that load the boats. He's got back from Canada.
Then we have Brian Marisack.
He's not here today. Doug's kid helped, Colton, the two of them helped with the crafts moving.
Ricky Recker?
Ricky's not here, and neither is Tim. Those two have been volunteered for years to help with the Public Works.
Shannon Gutierrez?
Nope.
John Reinheimer?
Nope, just not.
They're not here, it's just because they're very, very tired. Shell Nelson?
Probably one for her daughter, too. The two of them did the craft, two of them did the craft show, helpers.
And then Troop 28?
I know, I got it.
All right. And then we're missing a certificate, but Jay Bragg also with the...
Jason Bragg, come on down. Jason helped us a couple of years ago, then he got, he's in Homeland Security, so he missed last year, but he's back this year again with us.
And then the last one I have here is Larry Essex.
Larry's been with us for years. He used to live in Montgomery by the fire station, he moved to Plano, and he's helped us. He's been the single volunteer for at least 15 years.
30 years? The chief's correcting you, 30 years?
30 years, okay.
Uh, you want to go?
All right, we've got one more award, and it's to Tom Myers. Would you come down here, Tom? Tom's been my right-hand man for the 18 years I've been involved. He kind of talked me into it 18 years ago, and he really is, is still my right-hand man, even though he quit the food vendors this year. He has been, I read it, "Tom Myers in grateful appreciation for 30 years of service organizing Montgomery Fest." The first fest was in 1985, and he and Denny Schmidt and Ray Kozowski were the three that did it with, along with the Lions Club, and Tom really has stayed all 30 years, but this year, he gave up the food to Doug Marisack, but at the same time, he's always there because he's got to be there for the carnival, the fire department, and he's still going to be my right-hand man, so... No, it's all right. Hold the plaque up near Thomas, you can see it.
Well, we appreciate all you guys' help this year, and if you are available next year, we'd love to have you back.
Thank you.
I would just like to add one thing. I've learned with dealing with Mike Hammond the last couple of years, with helping him get the parade set up, that I have learned to not take anything personally that he should say to me or he should call me between the hours of 11:30 and on 1:30 on Sunday during parade setup. So you have a very tough job, and I appreciate what you do.
All right. Move on to the business. The consent agenda. I'll read the items that entertain a motion for approval. We have the minutes of the village board meeting on July 27th, the building report for July of 2015, accounts payable through August 5th, and the cancellation of the August 18th committee of the whole meeting.
So moved.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Hines.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
That carries 6-0, thank you. All right, with that, we'll move on to what looks to be a very long items for separate action, but I bet it goes a lot quicker than it looks. We have, do you want to handle all of these individually?
They have to be acted on individually, but I think Rich will...
We'll cover all at once, and then you can vote separately.
All right, so I'm going to read all of these, A through E. Now, we have ordinance 1676 proposing the establishment of a special service area number 38. I'm not going to read all of those three times. So what we'll do is, these are, I'll turn it over to Rich, and he can give us the summary.
Very good. They're all quite similar. There are five SSA ordinance proposed for approval tonight before the board. This, as you well know, establishes the common maintenance criteria within the ordinance for all five of these different areas. This is the first step in creating the SSA. There's a 60-day period that must take place after this action tonight, but then they would become effective after that point in time and recorded. There would be a minor wording adjustment within the Michael's SSA ordinance, so we'd ask that you make these approvals subject to attorney review as needed, and be happy to talk about any one of them individually, but they're all essentially the same, and like I said, establish the maintenance criteria for the five different properties. We would need action on each individual ordinance individually.
Okay, Rich, thank you. Any overarching comments? The one that I was going to ask is the D, which is amend and expand yellow transportation. Is that one different?
This one was, the wording is essentially the same as the other four. This is an amendment to the special service areas that, special service area that was created a few years ago to bring it in line with the current wording that we feel through village attorney review is necessary.
Have the property owners involved expressed any concerns that we should discuss?
They have not.
Okay.
And have they been notified on these, or will they be?
They have been, and they'll be notified of the action once they're recorded.
Just to be clear, there will be a public hearing prior to any final action as well, and then there's wait periods between the public hearing and then actually establishing ordinances for them.
Okay.
So there's a number of occasions for public participation and for further review. This is just the proposing ordinance to establish the special service areas.
All right. So if there's no comments, item A, which is ordinance 1676 proposing the establishment of special service area 38 for O'Reilly Auto Parts, waiver first and passage on the second.
Sorry, so moved.
Second. By trustee Spurling, second by trustee Youngerman. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yep.
Trustee Hines.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
That carries 6-0. Move right along to ordinance 1677, which is proposing the establishment of SSA 39 for Speedway. Again, waiver first, passage on the second.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Spurling, second by trustee Hines. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yep.
Trustee Hines.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
That carries 6-0, thank you.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Hines.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
That carries 6-0, thank you. Item D, ordinance 1679 proposing the amendment to and expansion of SSA 12 for yellow transportation.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second?
Did we miss one?
Maybe?
No, you're good.
Do we get it?
I got one more after this, though.
Okay. Yay.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yep.
Trustee Hines.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
And that carries 6-0. The last one of these is 1680 proposing the amendment of special service area, amendment to special service area 34 for Montgomery Business Center. Waiver first, passage on the second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Spurling, second by Youngerman. Call the roll.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yep.
Trustee Hines.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
And that carries 6-0. The last one of these is 1680 proposing the amendment of special service area, amendment to special service area 34 for Montgomery Business Center. Waiver first, passage on the second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Spurling, second by Youngerman. Call the roll.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yep.
Trustee Hines.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
That carries 6-0, thank you. Item D, ordinance 1679 proposing the amendment to and expansion of SSA 12 for yellow transportation.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second?
Did we miss one?
Maybe?
No, you're good.
Did we get it?
I got one more after this, though.
Okay. Yay.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yep.
Trustee Hines.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yep.
Trustee Hines.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
That carries 6-0. All right, move on to something a little different. Ordinance 1681 amending the Village Code, Chapter 3, Sections 3 through 9, or is that Section 3-9? Class C liquor license for, is that La Chiquita Food Market? This is the waiver first and passage on the second. With that, I will, who wants to give a summary? Chief?
Yes, at the last meeting, we discussed this. La Chiquita's obviously moving into the Montgomery Marketplace, and they're opening a restaurant and also the package, so tonight, along with the next ordinance, we're looking for approval on that liquor license.
And if you recall, they've come before us several times over the last couple of years, and the last time he came out here, we said, "Don't bother coming back for the next one, because we're well aware of you and the situation, and we can move forward with that as such," so...
Chief, can you please refresh my memory what the C license is and what the G license is?
Yes, absolutely.
Tell you, the G's the restaurant license. That's where 50% has to come from food sales, at least 50%.
And then the C is like, like the old Montgomery Marketplace, package, you buy your 12-packer case or bottle of liquor and leave the premise.
Thank you.
There's no other comments? I entertain a motion for ordinance 1681, Class C liquor license.
So moved.
It was moved by Hines, second by trustee Bond. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Hines.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
All right, move on to item H, which is the 2015 pavement management study that you received at the last meeting. I'm sure you had a lot of time this weekend to look at it. If there are comments, you can certainly have those now. If there are no comments, staff is looking for approval of this.
So moved. Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we'll take comments here if anybody has any. Or Engineer Wallers, did you have anything to add?
No additional comments. I was just going to respond to any questions if anybody had.
Any comments from the board?
Seriously, did everyone have a chance to look at that? Really? Okay.
We could slow it down if you...
I was going to ask to table it tonight, but if you guys are ready to go, that's fine.
I actually brought it with me on vacation. I was reading about it while I was in Alaska. I mean, it was great reading material for bedtime. Like, if I believed that, you were catching a whale or something with a fishbowl. I mean...
Well, let's, can we afford to slow it down for a week or two?
The only, we certainly can. The only thing, I know this board has expressed interest or support for moving forward with design in the fall, or the roads program in the spring. Delaying it tonight would mean that it wouldn't get approval till mid-September, just kind of delays everything a ways.
Couldn't we vote on it before?
Well, we can approve the pavement management study at our next meeting. Let's say we choose to do that, and then entering into a contract with engineering enterprises would then be the next month. It just delays the process.
So we'd be delayed approximately a month.
And we can do that if need be.
Maybe the other way to look at it is this would be the study, and the next step would be, what do we do with that information? And that maybe is where we'd really want to slow it down and take a good, close look.
If you approve the study, then, you know, we would bring back the plan for the first year, I believe, would be the, for your review.
One option would be, and I realize, you know, Montgomery Fest is certainly busy for everybody, so if we wait until our meeting at the end of August, what we could do is bring back, the PSA is going to be somewhat based on the street miles anyway. We could prepare one, have it in the packet. If there's substantive changes that we need to make, we could table the engineering agreement. If the report is more or less acceptable, or we could maybe concurrently approve engineering as well, and we could get started. It's up to you. That's an option. So we could table engineering, you know, at the next meeting if needs be, but we would like to get out and get field work going in September if possible, but certainly, you know, a couple of weeks isn't going to make or break anything, so...
If you, we can go ahead with the vote. I'll just, I'm going to abstain because I really did not have a lot of time to look at it, and I just don't want to say I...
I'll make a motion to hold it until two weeks.
I agree with what Engineer Wallers just suggested, that we can, at the next meeting, we can vote and approve this and have the agreement there as well if there's no substantive changes, and we can agree, and then there is no delay. But yeah, it gives us another couple of weeks to review it.
That's, that's fine with me.
Same thing with you?
That's fine with me. Yes, thank you.
So we had a motion and a second to approve it.
Right.
Do we legally have to do anything, or can we just...
Not really.
...agree to table it?
To table, or to...
Yeah, to table, even though there was a motion and a second on the floor to approve it.
Right, well, doesn't the first one have to technically be voted so that it failed? Yeah, and then... And then we make a motion to table it?
So we need to call the roll on the first one?
Can they just withdraw that first motion, or they have to vote on it? Or can they just make a motion to table?
I'll withdraw my motion. Somebody, I withdraw their second, and I withdraw my motion.
I'll make a motion to table this.
That was Hines. Hines, you want to withdraw your...
I withdraw my motion.
Okay. And then Denny already made a motion. Is there a second on that one to table this evening?
I made the motion to table it, Denny did.
He did also, so there you go.
I know.
If the clerk's happy, we can take a vote on this.
You put something in the minutes, it'll be...
I'd like to reflect, it's been a long weekend.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Hines.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Hines.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
And that carries 6-0. The last one of these is 1680 proposing the amendment of special service area, amendment to special service area 34 for Montgomery Business Center. Waiver first, passage on the second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Spurling, second by Youngerman. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yep.
Trustee Hines. So tonight, I'd like to introduce Antonio to kind of explain what she would like to do at her restaurant, and then we'll come back and talk about a liquor license here in a minute.
Good evening, everybody. This is my first time I try to open a business. I've been working 17 years as a store manager for brewing, and I request a license, full license for my business. I think it's a good place to serve our community in Montgomery. I think that's all I can say.
Okay. Are there any questions? Specifically, I know I reviewed your, your proposed menu in the packet.
What timeframe are we thinking of?
She has signed a lease with Chris. They're looking at probably 30 to 60 days to open.
Terrific, okay.
So to highlight the typical process that we do is the three options, correct?
Correct. At this time, we can, we can discuss our options. Like, like the mayor said, we have three options, to move forward, hold, or, or no. So at this time, I'll introduce, or I'll entertain any questions you have also. I've talked to Antonia twice last week, so...
I think it's, it's very appropriate for, obviously, this is a restaurant. It's very appropriate for this restaurant, in my eyes, to have access to a liquor license. The restaurant license, is that the one that you're requesting?
Correct, Class G.
Or would be, with the G. Very supportive of that, assuming background check and all that. Any thoughts from the board?
I'm not real familiar with some of these drinks, but there's no beer, there's no...
You have this top one on there. Cerveza?
Cerveza.
In the white.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I see, okay. Okay. I'm with you.
Isn't that what, what's on the...
I was at the bottom with the tequila, I didn't get up. All right.
Motion to approve.
Second, this is for discussion, right? Oh, you're right.
Just really let us know if you're okay with us moving forward with the background check.
I'm okay with moving forward.
All right, Denny?
I am okay too.
Pete?
I have no questions.
I'm okay.
All right, so it sounds like, proceed.
Thank you very much.
All righty, thanks for coming, appreciate it. All right, move on to item B, which is a liquor license request from South Moon Barbecue. Go ahead, chief.
Thank you. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Harlan and Katie. Would you please come down? Harlan and Katie Logan currently own South Moon in Hinckley. They are working with Tim Ivors and Virginia, Virginia's here and her husband, on the Gray's Mill. At this time, they'd like to discuss their plan for South Moon. I'd like to introduce Harlan and Katie Logan.
Hi, thank you. I'm Katie Logan, and we opened up South Moon Barbecue in 2009. We started it as a roadside shack that we operated three days a week, about three months of the year. My husband came to me in 2011 and said, "I have a great idea. I want to open up a real restaurant." And I said, "Great, but I'm not going to work there." And so that didn't really pan out. So he found a place in Hinckley, and they welcomed us with open arms. In 2013, some building owners in Hinckley said, "Hey, we want you to expand, and we've got a great spot for you." So we opened up our expanded location in April of 2014, and we have true southern barbecue. My husband and my son, slow smoke, dry rubs are homemade. We have homemade sauces, homemade sides, and everything's made fresh daily. We go by the motto, it is what it is, and it's gone when it's gone, because it's about a 15-hour cooking process. So we hope we get it right every day, but sometimes there's stuff that's going to be gone. We actually, my husband competed in a barbecue contest for the Aurora Valley a couple months ago, and, and then he was brought over to the mill, and he fell in love with it, as I'm sure you can see why, because it's a beautiful building, and it just kind of spoke to him. He asked me to come take a look at it, and I said, "Well, wait a minute, we just opened up another location in Sandwich. What are you thinking of?" But once we met Virginia and Tim and Ron, it was just, I don't know, it just felt right, and it's just a great location. We'd like to duplicate what we do with alcohol at our Hinckley location and at our Sandwich location. We keep it pretty heavy for craft beers. We've got about 85 craft beers that we have in Hinckley. Probably going to, you know, try and duplicate that. We don't do carryout in Hinckley. I wouldn't want to do carryout in Montgomery either. We do do carryout in Sandwich, but we're at the golf club, so a lot of the golfers want to take our beer out on the course, obviously. We will have mixed drinks and so forth, we will do a full bar. But we do want to really highlight the beer, because I think beer and barbecue just go together. So we're looking for a license to, for dining in as well as outdoor with the dining area that's right on the river, so that we can have outside events and so forth, and also do catering like they've done in the past in the parking lot with the tent. And I think that is a Class G license, but I think there may be some additions to it for the outside as well. So, thank you.
I presume that's what the L is, is outside, like she's referring to the lawyer?
Outside care.
Outside care, okay.
We'll, we're, we're working closely with them. I spoke to Virginia before about outside, so we'll, we'll come back, like similar to prior people had at Gray's Mill, to discuss with the village attorney. They currently have a liquor license now too, so I don't foresee any problems with their background. They wouldn't be able to have them if there was an issue. So just looking for a direction to move forward here, bring it back very soon, and, and get approval.
Will they be looking for a couple licenses then, for a G and an L? Because G would be the restaurant, L would be the catering?
Correct. Yes.
Is that correct?
And, and we want to also talk about outside dining.
Okay. We can figure all that out. Now, we just need to make sure the board's good to move forward. I just wanted to clarify, they'll need...
Yes.
At least two then? Okay.
You've had good reports at the fest. A lot of the food vendors know you. Some were calling you Half Moon, Blue Moon, but they all knew you as, as Hinckley and Sandwich. So you, you got a good reputation so far, they're very happy with your food, and so I think you should do well.
Thank you. We're excited, really excited.
Katie, what's your timeframe? When do you think you'll be ready to go?
We, we actually plan to open mid-October.
Okay.
You know, we have, I think our biggest issue is going to be staffing, getting everyone trained and so forth. You know, other than that, I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty good to go. The health department's already been out there and looked at it, so...
Okay.
Yeah, and that's usually your biggest hurdle, is the health department.
Okay, sounds good.
I've got two questions for you guys. One is, I was curious before you came, if it was at the Visitors Bureau barbecue contest, if that's where you first saw the building. The Visitors Bureau told me already that they want the assist on this, in, in recruiting you guys, so I'll have to give it to them now, because you said that publicly. But we're very excited about this. The one question I was, the one serious question I was going to ask is, the several floors of the building, would you be using all of them?
Yes, we are going to use all of them.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Very exciting. It's a very important building and use, and it, and it's, we're very excited about this, so...
Thank you.
I got another quick question. Gray's Mill is historic, the big sign's Gray's Mill. Are you going to do like Jason, that you have South Moon at Gray's Mill? I mean, you're going to leave that big sign so everybody knows you as Gray's Mill?
Try to incorporate our logo.
Okay.
All right. It's very important. I think, I think everything about the history of the building should be...
Okay, very good. Good, thank you.
I just like to chime in. I, I had the food here at the Aurora area convention, Visitor Bureau tasting, and it was excellent. Thank you.
I talked to the mayor of Hinckley before that, and he said, because he knew you guys were here, and he, he said that they're going to win for sure, they're going to win this contest, and when it came out, he knew right, right when he ate it. He's like, "This is it. This is their stuff, and they won," so...
Not that it was prime risk at all.
Yeah, right. But at any rate, very exciting.
I just want to say, I think we should move forward to bring more, at least bringing more business into the village of Montgomery.
Yep, absolutely.
I believe.
I think we need that.
Do you have something to add, ma'am?
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't sharing, verifying the time frame, because they are right now, like open from 11 to like 9:00. But I would like to get the whole, you know, the extended time right up to whatever the limit is, like when we enter segment one, isn't it? And then if they want to close ahead of time, if they want to... They can, but I'd like them to be able to get as long as they can, hours as long as they can.
And that's standard in the license, right?
Yeah.
That the hours are set for everybody the same?
Yeah.
Excellent.
The same hours, everybody else has that license.
And Ron, I just realized I didn't bring your chairs back. I hope that you got them. Okay. Sorry about that. All righty, sorry.
Thank you, Chris.
Yep, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
No problem, thank you. This has probably never happened before, but the property next door is item C, temporary liquor license request for Rolling Thunder event at the VFW. Go ahead, chief.
Thank you very much. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Gary Vandenbosch from Rolling Thunder. Gary's here third. Also tonight, everyone knows John Benke, our current commander, and his assistant, Bill Reagan, so they'd like to speak about a poker run they have in, in September.
Hi, Bill Reagan from Montgomery VFW. We rented our facilities to Rolling Thunder Sunday, September 13th. Rolling Thunder is a nonprofit motorcycle organization. They got their name Rolling Thunder from one of the, the first bombing raids in Vietnam. All the money they make and donations, 99% of it goes to veterans and the homeless. This run will start at, I, I got in the, the letter that you got, I said 9 o'clock. It's actually going to be 8 o'clock. We're going to serve breakfast. First expecting 300 to 500 bikes. The first bike will leave about 10 o'clock, the last one about 11:00. They're not all going to leave at once, they'll leave five and 10 bikes at a time. And they'll start returning about 2:00 for a raffle and food. And we're, we're also requesting, we're requesting a, a temporary J liquor license, and also if we can shut the street down from Weber to Mill for that day. I don't believe we're going to get that 300 to 500 bikes back in the afternoon. A lot of people getting late, they got to go to work the next day, et cetera. As far as our liquor, we're going to throw up a temporary fence on our property so that the liquors maintain on our property, not on the street. And between the Rolling Thunder and Montgomery VFW, we will have security to maintain that alcohol state. Is there any questions, or you want to talk to...
Questions from the board? Or, do you have anything?
I think the VFW's done a great job since, they've ever, ever since they've been here, and they've helped the village, village out a lot. And I, I should, I agree that we should help them out right now.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Names, did you have anything to add today? I know I talked with you at length over the weekend about the projects that you guys have done.
We have, we help the homeless. We have a concourse place up in Northlake, and Connie Peyton Foundation, at the concourse place, Connie, Connie Peyton Foundation took two floors.
Mm-hmm.
So we bought 14 rooms there at $2,500 apiece. So all our money goes to veterans and the homeless, veterans. We really appreciate you letting us be here tonight.
Yep, absolutely. I know you guys have, have already coordinated with the police department to have that road closed down for that event, so... Any questions or comments from the board? I appreciate you guys coming this evening.
13th is Saturday?
No, it's a Sunday.
Sunday. Okay.
I'm not hearing any opposition to move forward with the temporary liquor license?
Move forward.
So moved.
All right, well, just for discussion, so...
Oh, no, sorry.
So we're okay. We're okay, is what we're saying.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, chief. All right, with that, is there any new or unfinished business to come before the board?
I have one item. When we do next year's meeting schedule, can we please remove this meeting, this particular meeting that comes up after the fest? As long as everyone is in agreement of that.
I'm not hearing any opposition. I know we're canceling the next meeting. What we should do is, I would recommend that we keep the meeting and then cancel it unless we need it. So instead of canceling the 24th, like if there was somebody that needed something approved for some development, I would hate to have it canceled just for that, but I'm with you on that.
But, how about...
We'll do like with the cow, we'll have it on the schedule.
But how about make the cow a meeting?
But the board can cancel it.
Make the cow a meeting. Let's just not meet the Monday after the fest. I mean, we're, as I'm watching people as they're voting, they're like, I mean, we're all ready to fall over, so I just, I don't like it that it's here, right, the Monday after. So if we kept cow and made that an actual village board meeting the week after, I think that'd be...
Is it...
The way the calendar is, we, you'll be before Montgomery Fest, I think.
Next year?
I think.
So it does switch sometimes?
I haven't got a calendar, that's why I asked about if that was a Saturday or Sunday, but I, I think the 12th through the 14th is...
Doug, are you looking on your phone?
Yeah.
Right.
The 12th, 13th, and 14th would be the fest, so...
Meeting will be on the 8th.
Right.
Our meeting would be prior to...
Be before that.
Okay, then I guess I withdraw that comment.
It would be the committee, the whole meeting, that would be getting canceled.
Problem solved.
Yes.
Never mind then.
So we'll just...
12th, 13th, 14th.
Pete reminded me, if we're done with that...
Yeah.
About the carnival contract. I was under the impression that the intergovernmental, we okayed that for three more years? Did we not?
We did.
For three years?
Yeah, we did.
I don't know.
We voted on it, and everybody agreed to give them a three-year contract.
We have to look at our minutes, but I thought it was for three, we always do three-year contracts.
And this was the...
This is the last year.
This was the last year of the three years?
That's what they told us, correct, Dan?
Yes. Yes.
And did we, did we extend the contract?
Well, we're, we're discussing it tonight here.
Okay.
I, I remember us saying...
I, I thought we discussed it intergovernmental, and we said, "Go ahead with..."
I thought so too.
I thought it was going to be brought, I don't know if you have to vote on something like that. I don't think you have to though, do you? If as long as it's okayed, a intergovernmental meeting, it's...
But we know of a contract that should be voted on by the board.
Well, he could sign it, it's not...
But it was...
Yeah, I'm not sure. We can talk, let's talk about that at the next intergovernmental. That's all right?
Let me...
Talk about the renewal of the three-year contract.
When's our next meeting? I'm sorry. Since we're, we're, the hold's gone, so the next one's like the 20...
24th.
24th.
Yeah, we usually have the IGA meeting in September, so we can go over the final numbers from Montgomery Fest, something like that. Yeah, we usually have the IGA meeting in September, so we can go over the final numbers from Montgomery Fest, something like that. Anyway, let's discuss this further.
All right, she just wanted to re-insurance if we did want it, and I said, "I'm sure that we talked about it." We'll go through the minutes of the intergovernmental, but I'm sure we okayed it there. And then we'll go from there. Same way with fireworks contract, that was a little screwed up last night, didn't last as long as I would've wanted it. And again, we wanna look at that contract, I think that's already in the first year of three, right?
Correct, and I have that here with me tonight.
Okay. Is that the same amount as last year, or?
There was a small percentage of increase, but the main amount, we were given a discount, because we're, we've been with the company for many years. It was a little bit more than last year, but whenever I had a discussion with them, we wanted to stay around seventy-five hundred. We came in at seventy-six, sixty-nine. That was with the almost sixteen percent discount. So we really got a show worth eighty-four hundred. If you wanna say we want a thirty-minute show, then we might have to speak to Attorney Julian and discuss how we-
We're gonna have to talk to him, 'cause we've always had a thirty-minute show, and for them to give us a discount and then cut the show ten minutes, to me, that ain't a discount, that's, you know, and we've gotta get it. I know their industry's changed, and you got the ten-inch shelves and the, and I'd like to at least discuss that at some meeting of what, we got time on that one, 'cause we already have a contract, but I, it was, we've always done thirty minutes. I mean, as I've had in eighteen years, but, I don't know, it was twenty-two minutes, and I know seven minutes ain't a lot, but I didn't think the finale was huge like we usually have it. And maybe that's because of the price too, I don't know. We'll discuss it next meeting, that's fine.
Well, we've had them for many, many years, and we never had a bit of problem with them. And my opinion, I think we should give them a contract and extend that contract to two to three years.
Pete's talking about the carnival, which-
Yes.
Like I said, I thought we'll discuss that too at the next meeting.
We can get the minutes out and look at them.
Any other new or unfinished items?
Comment about the petunias, if I may. Due to the bridge construction that will begin later this month, early next, we're gonna need to remove the petunia plantings from the Mill Street Bridge. And we're offering those this coming Saturday in front of Village Hall, on the east side of Village Hall, free to people who would like to come and get them and use them for the rest of the season. The families who have donated to the petunia displays, the memorials, will have first dibs. And then at ten-thirty, the public in general is welcome to come and take all the petunias they would like and enjoy them.
And bring your own pots, correct?
Yes, bring your own pots and bags, but they'll just be the petunias and dirt that we have to share.
And I actually had a couple people ask me, Trustee Bond, if they could get the ones that are named after their family member.
We thought about that, I would defer to Todd, but there's some difficulty with that.
There's a few things, just to clarify, I think you just said ten-thirty, it's open to the public. I believe that was put out in the press releases, ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock, okay.
From nine to ten, the people who are donators or sign holders are welcome to come. It's a first-come, first-served basis, and then from ten to ten-thirty, we were gonna open it up to public. Additionally, I can understand the request, and I wish there was a way to honor that, but at this point, I'm at a loss as to how to organize all the flowers coming off the bridge. They're all gonna come off Friday afternoon and put on a flatbed trailer, which will be brought down here Saturday morning and dispersed. So it'll be very difficult to kinda inventory those flowers and associate them with different signs. Plus, I believe there's far more signs than there are flowers, so it might be that you have two people interested in the same flower box. And additionally, we're gonna do our best to try and gather as many of those, but the hardware in the box itself has to remain on the bridge. It's actually bolted in from underneath the flowers. So the flowers are set in with kind of a liner, and that whole thing will come out. There's sixty-six flower boxes, if I'm not mistaken, and we hope to capture every one of those, but there may be a few that unfortunately don't make it through the removal and trailering. So we'll do our best, but I'm afraid I don't know how we'd be able to honor that request. You're welcome.
It's nice to see there's that kind of interest in the program, though.
Thanks, gentlemen. All right, there's nothing further, you can see the future meetings on there, we canceled the committee, the whole meetings. We'll meet back here two weeks from tonight, August twenty-fourth, seven PM. With that, we don't have executive session, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And we're adjourned, thank you.